Gina.
Gina.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, September 18th, and this is a Moscow City Council meeting. Gina?
Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gina. First thing on our agenda today is the consent agenda.
I move that we pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Accept, sorry, accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Catherine and a second by Gina to approve the consent agenda as it is stated. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. We will move on to item number two, which is Staff Recognition Report. Gary, do we have anything this evening, sir?
The only thing we have is Chief Nickerson would like to make a presentation to council.
Okay. Chief, please come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, this is from the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department to recognize you guys for participation in our 125-year celebration. So this is a history book that Gary and Ben put together for us and we gave to all of our members on Saturday, and those that weren't able to attend, we'll be able to get them to those folks as well. So 125 years of continuous service, non-interrupted, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We want to recognize Assistant City Supervisor Jen Pifner for her role in that as well.
Something for us. Thank you. Is it a pop-up?
It's going to be a coffee table looking at my house.
Watch out, it's a pop-up.
It's like a fire hose.
Yes. Pretty cool.
Here, Brian, you gotta sign mine. You gotta sign mine. At some point, it's not to be now.
Catherine just brought up the thing that we also collected some money from some t-shirts, raised some funds that'll go towards the Red Cross for disaster relief for the local area, so, and those are still for sale, too, by the way.
They're great ones for $15.
Very good. Don't run off, Chief, because I want to brag a little bit on our fire department, because we had, we celebrated 125th anniversary, ladies and gentlemen, of our volunteer fire department on Saturday at Station Number Two. I got a chance to read our proclamation. Chief Nickerson, as well as City Supervisor Gary Reed, who talked, as well as three other folks, and talked about part of the history that goes back 125 years, and it's a very rich history, and we're very, very fortunate to have that in our community. And so for those out there, of course, they start their fundraising here before too awful long, and, boy, it's a very good deal for citizens of the Moscow community. So with that, thanks, Chief, and pass good words on to all our volunteers out there.
Will do.
Okay. Item number three, Mayor's Appointments. I do not have any this evening, so we will move on to item number four, which is Public Comment, period, Mayor's Response Period. Fifteen minutes we allocate for this. We allow folks to come up and tell us what's on their mind. We give them three minutes. They need to state their names and their addresses, as long as it is not on this evening's agenda or something that is in front of Planning and Zoning or the Board of Adjustments. So if you have some concerns, please step up to the podium and let us know what you have on your mind. Okay, well, nobody's rushing to the podium, so we will move on to item number five, which is the Donation Presentation to Family Promise, and we need Greg Morris in, as well as Elisa to come up front. This is going to be on Bruce Pittman and myself as well.
I was going to say a little something about the tournament. We had the 2017 Mayor's Golf Tournament on August 11th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We had 80 groups playing, which was up three teams from last year, which we were very proud to have. The winner's team was the Leachman Lager, and they included Casey Leachman, Trent Brown, Danny Payne, and Trevor Memmott. They have the Traveling Mayor's Trophy right now, but as soon as next year rolls around, they won't any longer. They do get to keep, they do get to keep a head cover that has their name on it and how they placed. I'd like to also reintroduce to you Kalisa Owens, who had a lot to do with, Recreation Supervisor with me, and she had a lot to do with this tournament as well, so I want to definitely thank her for her work. Proceeds to the tournament this year went to, goes to the Family Promise of the Palouse, and it's for $2,000, which we are very happy to be able to give to them. And I'll give you the, I know that the mayor has a few things to say prior to this, so...
Well, a couple of things, and I want to thank Greg and Kalisa for their hard work. They're part of our Parks and Rec Department, did a wonderful job of putting this on, and Family Promise of the Palouse is a very big deal to us for our area, because it helps homeless families, and they do a marvelous job. And I got a chance to be at a luncheon earlier this year and talk to them, and I really didn't, and a couple of different times I've helped with events that Bruce Pittman, who is the Chair of that commission, and, so I'm going to let you say a few words, Bruce, before we present this. How would that be? And you can explain a lot better than I can.
I'm going to simply say thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lambert, for dedicating the funds from this event for Family Promise, and to Greg and Kalisa for their hard work in putting it on. Family Promise of the Palouse's mission is to help homeless families with children and help them find a place, safe, sustaining place to live. And just a week ago, we welcomed our 50th family into Family Promise Shelter Program, joining three other families who are currently in that program. So we're full. We're full and very busy, and the good news is that we have north of an 80% success rate of moving families from being homeless into safe and sustainable housing within 90 days. And that can only be done with the help of a very caring community, volunteers from Moscow and Pullman, who have dedicated themselves to dealing with these complex issues of poverty. And so we're grateful for the city's support. We're grateful for Mayor Lambert dedicating the proceeds from the golf tournament for this work. We promise that the money will be well spent, so thank you.
One other thing I want to add, ladies and gentlemen, I've known this guy here for close to 40 years. Our hair was thicker, we had no gray, and our skin was smooth, but I can tell you, whatever this guy touches, it turns to gold, and so I trust this guy deeply with anything that he does, Bruce, and that's simple as that, so with that, let's get a picture.
Thank you. Be back.
How do we get out of this?
Could be wide angle, we could be all in it. One other comment I'll make about that golf tournament, man, that is a fun day, and it's fun to get people out there and have a good time and do something for the good cause of our whole community and our region. That's a big deal for me, and there's just so many great volunteers in this community that I look forward to helping with things like this. With that, we'll move on to item number six, which is the Presentation of the FY 2016 CAF Award. Gary, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm here tonight to pay some kudos to our Finance Department, our Assistant Finance Director Sarah Banks is here, as well as our Special Assistant Sue Nelson. If you could come forward. Do I have any other representatives, do I?
No.
Okay, this is a presentation, Mayor, which I ask that you will present here in just a moment, but I want to get a bit of a background. This is from the Government Finance Officers Association. It's a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which we are receiving our Finance Department in the city of Moscow for the 14th consecutive year for our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFER. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the city Moscow Finance Department, which is primarily responsible for the preparation of the award-winning CAFER. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So this is a really high achievement. The first couple of years, it was nip and tuck. We had to change a lot of processes in order to give reporting from our old audit to the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Since that time, we update it every year. It's used significantly in the city's credit rating. The mayor will remember some time ago, we traveled to San Francisco in order to receive an independent rating from a bond rating company, which allowed us to take advantage of historic low rates for the refinance, or excuse me, the financing of our wastewater treatment bonds. So this is more than just window dressing. This is something that yields tangible benefits to our citizens, and I'm very proud of the Finance Department and the work that the whole department does, but specifically Sarah and Sue in promoting this every year. So with that, Mayor, if you could come down and present the award, and I'll ask Zach to come up and take a photo, if you would.
Well, before we get Zach to take a picture of us, I want to make a comment. 14 straight years of doing this is a big thing for our city, and Sarah Banks and Sue Nelson are just absolutely pristine in how they do things, and the leadership of Gary Reeder as our, as our Intern Finance Director, it's took a team effort, and they've done a wonderful job. Collectively, our Finance Department has really stepped up to the plate, and I, as the mayor, am very, very proud, because this award isn't something that they just give away. It has some real credentials with it, and it's a big deal for all of us citizens in the city of Moscow. So, yeah, with that, let's get a picture out front.
I think you're trying to make me look taller.
Okay, moving along, we are going to go to item number seven, which is Idaho Emergency Relief Fund and FEMA Disaster Reimbursement Agreements. Elisa Anderson has the podium, so Elisa, tell us some fun news here.
Okay, there was quite a bit of information in your packet, so I want to kind of break it down for you and explain the process that the city's been through to receive these It was early in March when the water started rising in Moscow due to flooding, and as you all remember, on March 9th and 10th was the night that the Bridge Street Bridge area started flooding, and that water receded, and it went down, but it also caused a lot of damage in the meantime. And so in the past, the city's really just dealt with these issues and used, you know, in-kind sources through the volunteers in the fire department, city staff, and managed it. However, this year, there was a presidential declaration that was issued on May 19th that gave special consideration to nine northern Idaho counties. Leitau County was one of them, and that made us eligible for different sources of funding. And under that, FEMA was involved, and then also the Idaho Office of Emergency Management. And there were a couple of different programs, but at the time, we weren't sure how it was all going to work out. So originally, Les submitted an application for a lump sum with quite a bit of project information in it in April, and we weren't sure where that would go or how it would all filter out. We were hoping to get some reimbursement, and the county had put out information through their disaster services. And we continued to get emails. We weren't sure how it would work out, and after that first round of information was submitted, we then received notification that different meetings were going to be held, and Steve Schulte and I actually attended a meeting in Orfino on June 7th, and we had officials from the Idaho Office of Emergency Management and then FEMA, and it was well attended. In advance, we filled out several different forms, and from that, they kind of filtered out that there were going to be two sets of different programs, the one that the Idaho Office of Emergency Management would manage, and the considerations for that were going to be a little bit different than what FEMA was doing. I have to say, it was still confusing on what was all going to happen. I just filled out lots of forms and paperwork, and we attended the meetings. After, after the meeting, we were told that we would be contacted by FEMA for a kickoff meeting, and then also, in the meantime, we started receiving paperwork for the Idaho Office of Emergency Management under the Emergency Relief Fund, which was different than the money that FEMA was letting cities apply for. And the ERF Fund, as we call it, was recognizing that it had been a really hard winter in Idaho for a lot of counties, especially those that were recognized under the Presidential Disaster Declaration, and that the ongoing rain and the winter storms that started in December were going to have an impact on our streets and roads. And so within your packet, you see that we've received two separate, different programs of awards, and so I'll go through those with you tonight and try to explain how this all came down and what we still have to do and what we're accepting tonight. FEMA came and visited us on June 21st, and at that time, we went on a tour with them of the Joseph Street Project, which was on Joseph and Mountain View. There was deterioration in the pavement there. There was damage done to the ditch in front of the LDS Church on the corner, and then also from the flooding on the 9th of March 9th, or on the night of March 9th into the early hours of the 10th, the drainage ditch grate that sits right on the corner in front of the ball fields on Mountain View and Joseph was damaged, and that actually had plugged and flooding water, everything was up on the roadway, so there was a lot of activity that night there. We also had damage right out here on Third Street, and the pavement somewhat disintegrated. And then also on Sixth Street over here on the hill between like Van Buren and the street right out here, I can't mind blinking out. Just, yes. There was an, kind of a ditch in the pavement that happened in there, and we realized that there was an underground spring and some other more technical details that Les could fill you in on, but it was damaged. And so we looked at all these projects. FEMA came back and told us that they weren't sure that they really could help us, because it looked like a lot of the projects, or it looked like these projects, you know, weren't caused by damages during the declaration period, which was March 6th through the 28th. So we heard back from them a few days later, and they said, "But we still think we can help you." And so we met with them again and went through this process of a lot of paperwork. In the meantime, the three projects that are listed on your Emergency Relief Funds box on your staff report were moving forward through the Idaho Office of Emergency Management under consideration. It was a program that the local Highway Technical Assistance Council was running for the state, and they were considering projects. What was different was that these funds were separate from the declaration, but coming from the state, but federal money as a roll-down that would help assist with the damages done to the streets. So we had three different rounds of funding that they put projects out for. There was round one, which was May 15th, and we were notified that we didn't have any projects that were awarded out of those three that we had submitted. Then on the round for May, excuse me, June 15th, we had heard that Joseph Street, for the paving section of the road, had been considered and would likely receive funding. And then later on in the summer, it was actually in August when we heard, but there was another round of funding, if they still had money available, that was open on July 1, and we didn't hear anything for quite a while, and then we found out that the Sixth Street Project had actually been selected, too. And we had been told at that point in time that Third Street didn't meet the criteria. And so we had to provide information to them that FEMA was not funding the paving or the repair of the Joseph Street Hill Project. In the meantime, we waited. They said additional paperwork would come and we would fill it out, and during that time, then FEMA came back and we worked with them, and they said that they could assist us with the citywide funding, where we had done all of the sandbagging, and we had volunteer labor and staff, and work with us to refund or reimburse us for the work done to fix the grate on Joseph Street and Mountain View and the ditch. So that was the process. We continued to get information and letters, and then we, we had not heard from Idaho Office of Emergency Management at all, other than we got kind of a cryptic letter, and so we waited. And last week, I started getting emails from them asking for additional information, and she said, "Can you send me an email that says three things?" And so my email said, "This confirms that all three of the projects, Third Street, Sixth Street, and Joseph Street submitted to the Emergency Relief Fund were not damaged during the Presidential Declaration disaster period of March 6th through the 17th," or excuse me, "6th through the 28th, 2017. The damages to all three streets were due to extreme weather conditions that occurred throughout the winter period of 2016-17, and we did not receive any FEMA funds or federal highway funds for these three requests that were attached to our Emergency Relief Funds." And I did note that, however, we had received, or were proposing, or thought we would receive funding from FEMA for the ditch repair on Joseph and Mountain View. The next day, I received the agreements that were in your packages from the Emergency Relief Fund. The first one is for the Joseph Street pavement repair, which we had known, but we didn't know what the amounts were going to be, and they allocated the full amount that was requested with the information that had been submitted. That was $144,600, and they will reimburse us 90% of those costs. And keep in mind, though, we still have to provide receipts and document time. They will also reimburse us for staff, administration, and for the engineering's time, and any other mobilization costs we had or setup costs, bid specs or any of that. So now that we've received these documents, we'll stop putting together that information, and then we can submit for reimbursement. I don't know that it will be the full amount on all three of these exactly, if all of our costs will add up to that, but that's the maximum amount that we can receive. The next one, then, was the Third Street grind and inlay. So out of my surprise, when I received these agreements on Friday, or I guess it was Thursday, Third Street was in the group, and I had asked them several times, I don't understand why this other one was eligible and this one wasn't, because it was the same damages as what had happened on Joseph Street. And so, you know, the lady asked me for that email and said, "Well, we'll see," and so I included it in that email, and we got the agreement. That's all I know, so. We were really excited to see that. That's an additional $159,000. I don't know, as of right now, I haven't had a chance to work with Tyler to find out what all the costs are, but that certainly, you know, was unanticipated, and work that we did go ahead and have done this summer, because we needed to have it done, but we had anticipated paying that through city funding, so we'll submit that for reimbursement. And then also, a project that we haven't finished is the Sixth Street Underdrain Installation and Pavement Repair. So that's work that the city crews anticipate completing still this winter and getting that fixed, so that further damage isn't done in the upcoming winter season. Then we move on to FEMA. This was a process that, the amount of money that we're receiving, the total amount, I'm not sure that, bottom line, it's much of a profit for the city at this point because of all the paperwork that we went through. However, I will tell you this, I learned a lot, and I certainly will have a standard operating procedure to present to Les through this process to use in anticipation of future flooding events. We had to provide a lot of documentation that we didn't anticipate having to provide, and so multiple hours that were spent tracking down information and trying to remember who all was volunteering on this, on the night of the 9th, who was sandbagging, a list of the volunteer firefighters, community members, staff members, those types of things. So we went through a great deal of paperwork and a process, which we'll know next time to have someone out there taking pictures and documenting during that time and asking volunteers to sign a list or tracking down that information shortly thereafter, not a few months thereafter. So through this process, the first document you have there is, it's called Citywide Debris Removal, and the language is somewhat cryptic, and you read in there, there's work to be completed, work completed, direct administrative costs, and a lot of different codes of things. Tyler, Les, I, Steve Schulte, everyone in finance worked and pulled information together. I have a notebook that's about three inches thick for this money, but I think it was very well worth it, and we'll have a process in the future. So we still have a few things to finish up. We need to complete the repair on the ditch in front of the LDS Church on Mountain View, and then we'll need to go through a closeout process and document just a few more things. But, so we received funding for citywide debris removal, and that was for pretty much the Mountain View corridor, and the amount on that one was $8,793, or, excuse me, $8,793. The second one in your packet was for, is for the ditch repair on both the grate and the drainage ditch on Joseph Street, and that's the one we still have a little bit of work to do and expenses there, but it'll all be in-kind staff and materials, and that one's for $5,413.02. And the third one is for the volunteer labor that we had on-site that night through the fire department and city employees, and then overtime was reimbursed, and that, you know, was something we weren't aware that we could do, sandbagging costs, I think there was a little over 2,000, maybe 3,000 sandbags, we're not quite sure, and then pickup and removal of any debris afterwards or sandbags that people didn't, didn't want. And then the fourth one, for $3,295.72, was also, it says citywide sandbagging, but this paid for the labor costs. this paid for the labor costs for the night of March 9th, for the sandbags that were distributed, and also some debris removal on Mountain View and Joseph. So, with your approval, I can go ahead and have the mayor sign the emergency relief fund request, and then go ahead and finish processing the FEMA request. So, earlier on your agenda tonight, though, which was also a part of all of this communication that we had, when we had that kickoff meeting, when FEMA was here, we showed them some of the pictures of the flooding at the Bridge Street Bridge area. And they said, "Oh, well, that project, you know, meets the criteria for the HMPG program" that was on the consent agenda tonight. So, having that kickoff meeting and meeting with FEMA brought us to a point where we are now preparing and working on submitting that application this Friday. So, even though there was a lot of paperwork, we received a great deal of funding from everything, and a lot of lessons learned, and we'll be prepared the next time.
Excellent persistence. Good boy. You were...
Only me wants my job.
Well, yes, and we're glad you have it, I can tell you that right now. But, you know, it was a team effort with engineering and a number of different folks, finance, and so on and so forth throughout our entire staff. So, these things don't come just by one or two people, it's an effort by many. But you, you talking about that three-inch book that you have, and have all the notes and stuff, and the neat thing about that is it just makes the next time a lot easier how we can present it and go forward with it. So, congratulations on that extra effort. Questions for Lisa before we... Walter?
Let, let, go ahead.
It's more for Gary, but does this involve the necessity to reopen the budget to accept these funds?
No, sir.
Okay, Walter?
At least not at this time.
I would echo the mayor. Kudos, Alisa, to you, Les, Tyler, Steve, and the cast of city employees that persisted and made all this work and come together. With that, I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we authorize acceptance of grant funding from the Office of Emergency Management under the emergency relief funding of $325,215, and from FEMA under the Presidential Declaration for Public Assistance Disaster Related Costs Estimated at $13,972 and 1/4.
Second, Ed.
Can you give it to Art?
Okay, well, we've got a motion by Walter and a second by Art, I'll give that to Catherine. To authorize acceptance of grant funding from the Idaho Office of Emergency Management under the emergency relief funding of $325,215, and from FEMA, under the Presidential's Declaration of Public Assistance Disaster Related Costs Estimated at $13,972.25. With that, John, I'll start the roll with you.
Aye.
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 Thank you again, and I will sign that baby for as soon as you need me to sign it. Alisa, how was that?
I just wanted to share one thing, they did also tell us that they were very impressed that we had a volunteer fire department, and so many community members that were willing to go out and sandbag and help on flooding events. They were very impressed with that, so, another kudos to our fire department.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alisa, now, we will move on to item number eight, which is Humble Burger Modest Music Fest Street Closure Report, and Jen Pifner has got the report on this. Good evening, Jen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to actually introduce Dan Stewart, who is our interim farmers market manager, who's also assisting with community events, who's worked with Nate and Humble Burger on this music fest, and so I'd have him present the item this evening.
Good evening, Dan.
Thank you, Jen. Council members, good evening, Mayor. We're excited for this item. It's a, an event to look forward to, another opportunity for Moscow to drive tourism here. What we're looking at is not your normal street closure. So, what we'll be doing is, Nate's proposing to line out a street closure on First Street to ticket eventgoers to see this concert, and we have a number of other shows lined out as well. We recommend to approve this one-time pilot test to grant the street closure permission for Humble Burger for this ticketed event, for patrons of this planned music fest.
Well, Daniel, I gotta share with you, I like stuff like this, because I think it gives us a chance to shine in Moscow. I've been for a few street closures from time to time, block parties and other events, so we can add a little excitement to our downtown area. I love that. Now, Gary, did you have a point you wanted to make?
Yeah, the comment I wanted to make is this is unique, as indicated in the CCSR. This is the first time that we've closed a public right-of-way and allowed admission to be charged to a specific event. The reason is because it's part of a, over 32 bands, my understanding is, music fest that's being privately funded at different venues downtown. This is the ending, I don't know what you call it, the music business, the big show at the end. And the proceeds from this are going to be used to help offset the cost of the music festival. So, it's one of those things that we realized that, being a case of first impression, we wanted to run this on a pilot to see how it works, and then develop a policy, hopefully to present to the council after that.
Walter?
A couple of questions. The, this will end at 10:00 PM, is that correct? Or are they asking for an extension on the Noah's orders?
No, I believe we've changed that to 10:00.
So, 10:00 PM?
10:00 PM.
That's what it was. Public Works Finance is 10:00.
Yeah.
That's the standard.
Okay.
Extension from 9:00 to 10:00.
And secondly, have there been any issues that staff has identified that are concerns or about this? It's not that unusual, but...
No, and actually, I've met with Nate Wolf a number of times, and he has done his due diligence in planning for this event. So, I'm very excited to see everything.
I have a question. So, yeah, I went through the code, Title 10, which is all police regulations. It looks like everything's been followed exactly. So, but my question had to do with, because it's in the public right-of-way, and it's a private cost, is there, usually there's some fee that's paid, even though it's a pilot? I was just wondering if there was going to be a fee paid for, because I didn't know if they were going to have extra police staff, or that kind of stuff.
We do have the typical street fee, or street closure fee that would go along with that.
I didn't, well, what is that? I don't even know.
I would have to refer to the fee schedule off the top of my head, I don't know.
I didn't know where to find the fee schedule, I would've gone there, I only went to the code.
Approximately $100, I'm told.
Thank you.
It isn't an alcohol-related event, so there will be no additional police charge.
Right, yeah, they made a point of saying, like, there's no alcohol, I got that, but I just was curious, because I didn't know what the usual cost was.
$100 bucks.
And the map was helpful, because it showed, you know, right-of-way for vehicles and stuff, so...
Gina?
I have to say, I enjoy a good street party, and if you add a little music in, that's the best thing. I like our thoughtful approach to this, let's try it, let's pilot it, and see what happens. And I like that we are being diligent and being careful and all of that. So, Your Honor, I move that we approve a one-time pilot...
I have another question.
Hang on just a second, she's in the middle of a motion.
I know, but I didn't get it.
Just hang on a second.
All right.
Go ahead, continue.
Continue, Gina. Okay. I move that we approve a one-time pilot test to grant street closure permission to Humble Burger for ticketed patrons of their planned modest music fest.
Sure. Tide? Okay, Ty, I'll give it to Jim. Now, with that, I'm gonna go to Catherine, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask more questions about it being in the street. So, because that's a street. And so, did they consider maybe doing Friendship Square, because music has been set up there before? I just was curious as, because now the stage is the street, why there?
Yeah, so, with multiple locations throughout downtown, the headliner positioned where it's at is the prime location for the host. And since we won't, since there won't be alcohol served in the street, then the opened businesses, Humble Burger and Lodge Pull and the other neighbors, will be able to serve their patrons there. So, and then, when you take a look at creating the boundary for the ticketed patrons, it really works out well. So, we put considerable time into developing certain locations, but this one specific area allows for large gathering, and I would say the best routing of traffic around during the event for the safest possible collection of those patrons.
Another question?
Yeah, yes, I'm just trying to visualize this. So, it's kind of like taking rendezvous, and, because they're ticketed, moving it downtown. Is that what you were thinking?
That's some of the thought behind it, if you will, yeah.
Okay, so, if you're not ticketed, you can still hear all the great stuff going on, you just can't get in that particular area.
That's mostly the idea there, yes, yeah. That's it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions before we move forward with the motion? Okay, we got a motion, it was to approve the one-time pilot test to grant street closure permission to Humble Burger for the ticketed patrons of their planned modest music fest. And that motion was made by Gina and seconded by Jim. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, we do have a test, folks, so we'll see how it goes, so, it'll be great, we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Good luck, absolutely. Thank you, Daniel. Okay, with that, well, we're gonna move on with reports, that was the last thing on our agenda, so I'll start with you, Jim.
Okay, everything on the Public Works Finance agenda this week was on the regular agenda, or consent, so, don't have much there. The only other meeting I was at in the last week was due to the Arts Commission being canceled, was Palouse Knowledge Corridor, and things that are going on there, are planning for next year's Entrepreneur Boot Camp, and Gina is doing a great job of trying to get us some feedback on how that's worked out in the past, how many new businesses have been created. We're polling all the attendees of all the bootcamps for the last four years to find out who started a business and who didn't, because it wasn't viable, and we haven't gotten very much feedback yet, but the Pullman Chamber of Commerce is dedicating an intern to calling all these people, since they didn't respond to email very well. So, we'll try to have enough information on that to know what our cost-benefit analysis is going to be on funding that project in the future.
Very good. Art?
All my stuff is coming up in the next two weeks, I don't have anything for this meeting.
Okay, Walter?
On Wednesday, 13th of September, I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which had a couple of items of interest. They went back and finished their review of chapters 1, 2, and 3 of the 2009 Comprehensive Plan update, with an eye toward bringing that forward to council sometime in the next few months. They're working their way through the other commissions as well, and there are other chapters to bring through P and Z. The main thing in that review was that they did address the street functional classifications part of the third chapter, I think it was, and will have a recommendation for council from that. They also looked at a proposed amendment to the signage code. It seems there's some considerations and problems possibly with large properties. We limit the amount of signage on a business property by the size of a lot, but where you've got a business that takes up an entire block, things become a little problematical. So, they're working their way through proposal, they had some information from other communities about what they do, and they seemed a little bit all over the board, it wasn't like you could look at it and say, "Well, here's what everybody else does." So, they're working their way through that one, not ready for primetime yet.
Okay, Catherine?
I attended the 125th anniversary for the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, which was great. And at the last meeting that they had, they had four new EMTs and two new fire department members, and they are still selling shirts for $15 that goes toward the Red Cross. They designed gray ones for the public that they wear, and you always see the volunteer fire department in blue ones, so they're trying to make people feel part of things. And then there was the Bike Path Tour on Tuesday from that commission, and we, it was really interesting, because they talked about their orphan paths and all the different things, and there was pretty good turnout, Mr. Mayor was there, and Jim?
The one item I was going to report on was just reported on, so that's all I have to say, sir.
Okay, John?
I got a couple of little things here. Fair and Affordable Housing Committee had a meeting a week and a half ago, and it was more than anything else, doing some housekeeping, some cleanup, and now that the school has started, the committee is going to be busier dealing with issues of housing, which is pretty much the way it is, I think, at every institution across the country. And these people that we have on our committee do a good thorough job, and I'll be looking forward to more meetings. And then the other one is the Building Code Advisory Board, and they are now finished for this year, and the biggest accomplishment, and it's a large one, they made Moscow Building Code, the state Building Code, and the federal Building Code mesh better than they have, and so that we end up with, if you look at one of the building codes, whether it's the city, the state, or the federal, you should end up with essentially looking at the same code, the same regulations, and so that the customer and the city are able to put something together that makes sense on all three levels. And they, again, did a great job on a fairly boring subject. Even the builders and the architects and all that, they, you're sitting in there, and I'm obviously not a builder, so I'm scratching my head a little bit, why are they spending all of this time? Well, you listen a little bit, and then you figure out why they're spending the time. And they want to make it as easy and seamless as possible, and I think they can do a good job on that. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, John. September 9th, I got the chance of getting a chance to help with a presentation to Kristen Armstrong, a three-time gold medalist bicyclist, who are part of the Paradise Path, was through the campus, the university was putting her on, and that was a very fun day, that was on the 9th of September. And as Catherine had noted earlier, on September 15th, on Saturday, the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, 125th year, which is a big deal for all of us, and so I'm gonna mention that as many possible times as I can, because it's a big thing for our community. That's all I have. Gary, before we adjourn to executive session, do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay, with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session per Idaho Code 74-Dace 206, 1C, and 1F. And at the end, this meeting will not reconvene after that.
So moved, Your Honor.
Jim made a motion, Catherine made a second, all in favor by aye. Opposed, okay, we will adjourn to the executive session.